Okay, let me start over here then. Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. And this is the Planning and Zoning Commission of the City of Bisbee, June 17th, 2021, 5:30 PM via Zoom. I'll call, meeting to order, roll call. John Ballas?
Here.
Douglas Dunn, here. Sandy Housman?
Here.
Nancy Pirana?
Nancy's on vacation.
Okay. Jennifer Ginger Ryan?
Here.
Mike Smitsler? No. Mike Ablyn?
Here.
Louis Pollak, who is the council liaison to the commission?
Here.
And Joe Ward, the staff liaison to the commission. First call to the public. Is there anyone on who would just, would like to speak on a topic other than the agenda items?
I have a question.
Okay, Mike?
Just for future reference, I had to appear before mayor and council on a matter that was approved by Plan and Zoning. And I was surprised that mayor and council did not have my letters of recommendation and any other letters. My assumption was made that when something was approved, the Plan and Zoning, that the minutes and all the related items to that are presented to mayor and council. Is that an incorrect statement?
Yeah. Yeah, it did, it seldom gets in the mayor and council.
I see. So in the future, is the responsibility of the presenter, in this case it was myself, to request that the minutes and all the related topics to a particular case are presented to mayor and council?
Why don't we, why don't we talk separate, Mike? Because we're, we're up to agenda now.
Oh, okay, no problem.
Okay. Agenda item one is a public hearing to consider, reconsider an application for transfer of city property. Discussion and possible recommendation to the mayor and city council. Consideration of a request for the transfer of city parcel APN 103-72-051A, located at 8 Old Bisbee Road. Applicant wishes to acquire the city property for storage of tools, equipment, and office. The parcel is approximately 8,116 square feet. The parcel is Zone C1. All public notice requirements have been met. In assistive pursuit to Article 2.69 of the Bisbee City Code, prior to the sale, exchange, or abandonment of any city property, the proposal to transfer the subject property shall be referred to the Planning and Zoning Commission for review and recommendation by that commission. I'll call for a staff report on this, Joe.
It's just a piece of property out there, kind of across from the middle school there on Old Douglas Road. Kind of kitty corner, I guess, more B where it's at. But there is, it's .19 of an acre, around 8,097 square feet. Before this, we had somebody that wanted to buy it. And so this is kind of a second go around with that. The, mine had, I think, used, used the other, the other application as a template here with the, to come up with a $30,000 recommended minimum bid. If it is, see one, Zone Property, so therefore it is appropriate for everything that, that Mr. Ablyn had wanted to do on it. And the city would be interested in selling it for sure. It's, it's, the building there, it looks pretty fair on the outside, but it's, it's quite run down. The roof is shot and it's been, had water pouring into it for years. And there is a, I guess it is unbelievably massive hive of Africanized bees in there.
Hmm. Unbelievably what?
There's a, there's a high.
Unbelievably what? You're, you're coming out garbled for me. What's wrong with it?
It's got mold.
Oh, okay.
It's got bees.
And how close to the adjoining building is, is this property?
I'm having a hard time pulling this back up. Okay. The, it's, it's really hard to tell, Doug. If I'd known ahead of time, I could have measured it for you. Go right plant there. It's, it's gotta be 40 feet at least towards between them, if not 50.
Well, able to use that, you'd have to have adequate space to get in and out of the, the buildings. Applicants' presentation, Joe? Or Mike, pardon me.
Oh, well, yeah, yeah. I, I guess the only question I would have is that in lieu of the condition of the building, and now I understand there's African bees in there and mold and stuff. Two questions is, one, how would one gain access to inspect it? And two, how do we derive at an opening bid price of $30,000? That seems, I don't know, I mean, I have my own self-serving interest, obviously, but it seems to be a little high. But I was just curious on those two aspects. If I wanted to inspect it, what would I have to do? And then the second question is, what about the, the opening bid price?
See, I've had other people who contacted me and said that the opening bid price was too low. Also, Mike, so, you know, it goes, it cuts both directions.
Okay.
No, no, I'm not here to, I'm not meaning anything by saying that.
No, no, I don't, I don't take it that way.
Yeah. But the, there's that much dirt and it's commercial and it's a real good central location. And I think, I think that's a good beginning place. I think you can, you can have bids at that. But that's where it was at, you know? And I didn't set the bid, the bid this time, last time I did. But it was, it was 30,000. And then the, the guy who was bidding on it backed out because he got kind of cold feet. He doesn't like to bid against other people. He thought other people were gonna bid with him.
And how about, Joe, the inspection? If I wanted to get in there and check it out?
We could open it up and the city, the city's got keys to get in there.
Okay. Do you know for a fact that there's bees in there?
I don't, I was told that.
Okay.
This building is the garage for the ice house?
Pretty much, John. And there's an adjacent, would appears to be a small office next to it. Or, or I should say, there seems to be a small office adjacent to a four bay garage.
That's an apartment.
Okay.
Uh, Joe? Joe?
Yes, Louie.
If I got my numbers right here, your opening bid is somewhere between $3 and $4 a square foot, which is pretty much in keeping with what's been done in, in the past years, in my experience.
Right, for the price of the dirt, that isn't bad, let alone with the building on it, that is salvageable, but it's, it's got, you know, I think the building has, it has as much negative as it has positive about it, honestly.
Okay, thank you.
I, I have a point of clarification. On the application, it says the property location is 2 Douglas Highway, but it is in fact 8. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. And I think that price, you know, I questioned that price before too, because I think it comes out to about 370 a square foot. And I've seen property going for, you know, property alone with no structure going for 350. So I think that's a really fair price for it.
And keep in mind that if it, that at a public auction, it's liable to go for more than what's asked.
Yeah. Yeah.
Worth more.
Okay, I'll declare now a public hearing open to receive public comment. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in support of this proposal? If not, is there anyone who wishes to speak against the proposal? Then I declare the public hearing closed with no comment. I call for commission discussion. Questions and discussion.
Can I speak on this or no? I have to reclusive myself?
You can.
It'd be inappropriate.
Mike's bringing up a point that has kind of puzzled me for a while. Some of these evaluations of properties, seems like it's just kind of a hunch. And I, I would feel more comfortable if we actually had professional advice, like an appraisal, like a, like a real, real estate trained appraiser. But maybe that's another question, but just, just a hunch, Mike. I don't know, maybe if, if we had a true appraiser who has knowledge of the market and would do the comps and has a thorough database of comparable properties, maybe something more research-based would be than just a hunch. Foot for thought.
Do you think that, John, because the price is too low or too high?
Well, I'm thinking globally in terms of all the properties that Joe and I talked about, how there's a backlog of properties for sale. And not just this one in particular, but the statutes or the city code 2.69 stipulates that we have to set up a value on it. And I'm not an appraiser. I, I don't know what the value really is. And Joe does a good job, and he probably knows the market better than anybody. But I'm wondering if we need something more precise and more research-based than just a hunch.
I think this $3,000 to $4,000 per square foot is something we've used in general for, for properties. And of course, this will be by auction. So that will certainly also determine what people are willing to provide bid for it.
I'm comfortable with that because then the market dictates the value.
Right. Other commission comments?
It's a fair price at 30 grand, maybe even, it'll probably go a little bit higher considering the, the supply and demand and what's going on right now currently in the marketplace. You know, so I, I don't think by any means, John, or anyone else, that 30,000 is too low. I think that's a, I was just curious how, that's a good starting price. I think, I would be, I wouldn't be surprised if that thing goes for, you know, 50, 60 grand with the current market conditions. I'd like to get it for 30, but we'll see what happens.
You know, John, I, I kind of like your idea for some of the property that's being sold, but it's, it's unusual, isn't it, to sell a piece of property with a structure on it? We've sold a lot of vacant land. And I can see where the price of the vacant land comes in because it has to do with buildability or slope level, location. But when there's a structure involved, that is something to think about, John's suggestion.
Well, I, I could tell you that, if I could, a structure of this condition, that's why I asked about getting into it. It could, it could actually detract from the value because of all the crap that's inside of it that then has to be removed. So it, it, you know, to your point, yes, sometimes vacant, sometimes dirt, as it's called, is worth a lot more than something with an actual structure, especially if the structure then has to go through code compliance and building code and a whole slew of other things. It sometimes lessens the value, just FYI.
Is there a staff recommendation on this? Joe?
The city, the city would be benefited by, by selling the property because right now it is, it's not, it's not an asset to us and it's not an asset to anybody. It's kind of an eyesore. And we would, it would put it back on the tax rolls, which would be good for us.
Okay, I call for a motion.
I'll make the motion. Um, I move the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend to mayor and city council the transfer of APN 103-72-051A to the applicant for appropriate consideration with a minimum bid price set at $30,000.
Do you want to add this?
Second.
Second? Okay, I'll take a roll call vote then. John Ballas?
Yes.
Douglas Dunn, yes. Sandy Housman?
Yes.
Ginger Ryan?
Yes.
And Mike, you abstain. So I guess the motion carried. Agenda item two. A public hearing on a proposed amendment to the zoning code. Possible recommendation of the mayor and council. Consideration of proposed amendment to the zoning code to establish screens as part of Article 6.4C, which is walls and fences in the Bisbee Historic District. All public notice requirements have been met. I'm not sure how much more of this I need to read here. We're talking about one, wherever, I also want to say this came as a recommendation from the design review board. One, that whenever practical, employ screens which can be stored out of sight when not in use. Two, to design screens to minimize impact to the appearance of the existing buildings. Three, do not install permanent screens that block the view of historic facades or block significant new view corridors. Do not install screens that impact natural light to neighboring properties. Five, permanent screens shall not exceed six feet above the surface that they protect. Six, recommend incorporating landscaping plant material into the screen design. There, and seven, there shall not be any advertising on screens. A call for staff report, Joe?
This is based upon, the screens are put up on the pickleball court. They're right up, right up the Tombstone Canyon that are in the eyes of many people. Well, they are blocking the views of St. Pat's. And there's been a lot of controversy over this. And it's, it's gone back and forth with, and it even went, the, the decision was made that they, that to decline allowing those screens by the, by the design review board. But it went to the Board of Adjustments who overturned that decision. And so to take the ambiguity out of it, the, the DRB would like to have something set up to, to where in the future that people can't just put up screens to block the wind in the pickleball courts when they're blocking, in this case, a, a view corridor of one of our monumental buildings for the Historic District. But it would apply to a lot of, a lot of different potential uses.
Is there an applicant present or anyone who wishes to speak on this? I'll go to, the public hearing then is now open to receive public input. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in support of this action? If none, is there anyone who wishes to speak against this proposed action, this amendment? If not, I'll declare the public hearing closed. I call for commission discussion. Any questions, comments?
I have a comment about item six. It says to recommend incorporating plant material into the screen design. But above, it indicates that the screen should be movable. That's a problem. I don't know how you do landscaping materials that include living plants and then take them up and down.
It'd be within your prerogative to, to strike that also.
Um, I guess it just doesn't make sense to me.
Good point. Other comments, questions?
Joe, you said these, these screens were put up by pickleball players to block the wind? Is that what you said?
Yeah, their, their windscreen, they put up there and they had head on them originally. And we, I went up there and talked with, with people from the church as well as Ken Budge and Cynthia Conroy discussing the appropriateness of having advertising on that. And they agreed to take, take the advertising off. And if you remember, they, they, they took, well, they did take it off and they kept their word. And I'm not saying anything about, but how are you gonna do it? They, they spray painted over the top of the name, which other people didn't like. You know, you do, you can never make everybody happy. They didn't, they didn't like that either. So it wound up being so controversial. And it's just gone back and forth for so long with the, the DRB that maybe, maybe there should be something to prevent any more of this.
Okay, other comments, questions?
I just think you have to be concerned about one's view corridor. Because perhaps this might set a precedent for future types of obstructions. And you just have to, you have to walk a fine line with, with this stuff. The next thing you know, somebody's gonna say, well, since we put the windscreen up over here, let me go put the windscreen over there. And I don't, I think, Joe, the code might call for in certain situations, you can't obstruct somebody's view corridor. But then it comes in, I'm sorry?
Public views are protected, but private views are not. And views of the, of the, the, the buildings that are, that are considered to be monumental buildings within that Historic District, blocking those views are, is strongly discouraged. But what's happening, you see, is that if this, if you adopted this, it wouldn't be retroactive. So the screens that are put up at St. Pat's predate this.
So meaning that you could take them back down?
There would be no control over those by this, with this.
So once they go up, they're permanent?
Once they go up, they've got, they've got the right to remain there. These regulations would apply to any new screens, not the current screen.
And just for the benefit, DR, Design Review Board was in favor of the screens?
No.
No, they were not in favor of them?
No.
Right.
Board of Adjustments overturned their decision.
I see. I, I would just, I would be concerned about protecting the view corridor of historic buildings and similar things of that nature.
Who's the final arbiter of this? The council?
When somebody violates this, if, if this rule were adopted, the violation of the rule, is that what you're talking about, John?
Well, you said DRB talked about it and Control Board talked about it, and now we're talking about it. Who's the final, who's the final say-so? Council?
You can do nothing about what they've done in the past, but this would be, you would be, if you were, if you were recommending this rule be, be sent to mayor and council for their approval, then that, then this rule would apply in the future. And the final arbitrator would be Superior Court, finally, actually. That's as far as you can, you can appeal these things, if that's what you mean.
Further comments?
I, I have a one. The first one, where it says, employ screens which can be stored out of sight when not in use. That's whenever practical. Is that, is that anything we can, how difficult are these screens to put up? I mean, can we just say to store the screens when they're not in use?
That was my recommendation.
I don't know how difficult they are to put up and take down.
Joe, you got some dimensions of the screens? Or do we have a?
The one, the ones that we could, you could use as an example, the ones at St. Pat's. But this is, this is for future screens. How big, well, I couldn't, I couldn't tell you what people intend to do.
So the ones at St. Pat's, they're not integrated into the chain link or anything? They're just portable?
They're, they're inside of the chain link. They're not integrated to it.
I kind of like Sandy's idea because you get the best of all. When they need the wind blocked, they have an option, something to utilize for that. And then if it is a design or a view issue, then it's taken down. Maybe stipulate that it's, it's gotta be portable.
Well, you know, the screens at St. Pat's will not comply with this anyway. They talk about permanent screens not exceeding six feet above the surface they protect. In my mind's eye, I see the screens at St. Pat's way higher than that. They're way above the court, aren't they?
That might be what they're trying to prevent.
Yeah, they're like 20, they're huge.
How many pickleball players are there?
I have no idea. How many pickleball players that take the screen to life, well, John?
Okay, have some suggestions in terms of how we want to word this motion? It's been proposed that we delete item six.
Yeah.
There's also discussion in terms of changing item one and what, what are those suggestions?
I'd like to make a motion that we, we ask the submitter to come up with some plans and/or design for a removable and/or a portable windscreen before we make a final decision on this. I would not be, I would not object to a windscreen so long as it's taken down when they're not playing. And if that is actually practical. I'm not a pickleball player and I don't understand the nuances of a windscreen as it's applicable. But before we make a decision to have a permanent fixture attached to something, I think we should turn back to the applicant and ask them to come up with a, some type of a design that would allow for a portable windscreen before we make a final decision on something like this.
I don't think, sorry. I don't think there is an applicant. We're, we're just writing new code, right? Or modifying code. What about if for number five, we remove the word permanent?
Also, under one, we could remove the word whenever practical and say employee screen was can be stored out of sight when not in use.
Seems like it would eliminate the, the view issue, the view corridors, etc. If they were, if, if it did call out that they had to be portable, then the view people could be happy and the people could have their screen and they needed to protect their pickles.
Is there a motion here then?
Yes, I would make a motion for everything we just said to put it into the code.
Okay, that we modify Article 6.4. C. That, that one, that employ screens which can be stored out of sight when not in use, eliminating the word wherever practical. Item two, design screens to minimize impact to the appearance of the existing buildings. Three, do not install permanent screens to block, that block the view of historic facades or block significant new corridors. Four, do not install screens that impact natural light to neighboring properties. Five, remove the word permanent. So five would be screen shall be, shall not exceed six foot above the surface that they protect. We eliminate items, item six, then we include seven. There shall not be any advertising on screens. Is there a second?
Let's rename number seven to six.
Number seven becomes six, right?
Second. Second.
Okay. All in favor then? John Ballas?
Yes.
Douglas Dunn, yes. Sandy Housman?
Yes.
Ginger Ryan?
Yes.
And Mike Ablyn?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous, carried. Agenda item three. Review for and discussion of possible direction of the staff regarding parking plan and study for Old Bisbee. What are the next steps? And I would like to call, this is something we, we brought up and want to move forward on. And I have had a discussion with Mr. Pollak, our city council. And I have had a discussion with Mr. Pollack, our city council lay us on. So Louis, would you like to speak on this initially?
Uh, the, on the parking plan and the study for Old Bisbee, correct?
Correct.
Yes, uh, we, you and I discussed the fact that a lot of work has already been done by the University of Arizona as one example. And there are many ideas for uh, for increasing parking, especially in Old Bisbee where it's direly needed. Uh, but what we have never been able to do or haven't successfully done in the past is come up with an implementation plan that's based on those studies. And I think it would be wise for us to get together and uh, and bring all that information together and then set up a proposed implementation plan that could be phased, depending on how much money is available at any given time. Uh, to do the little things in Old Bisbee that would increase parking and also solve some other problems too that are associated with the, the lack of parking and or the abuse of existing parking. So does that pretty much summarize what you and I talked about?
Well, you kind of bring more experience to this than the rest of us have. And uh, are you willing to, to, to draft something for our reaction?
I would be willing to do that, yes.
I got something relevant to bring out, Ben. The, um, I'd said an email, I'll read it to you, to, to um, Mr. Hawken, Stephen Hawken, our city manager. And I said, um, this was on the ninth of June, I sent, I said, Steve, about the time the COVID came down on us, I was asked and received permission from Ms. Coleman to meet with Ms. Judy Anderson to possibly hire her to compile a single report to the Planning and Zoning Commission from three separate parking studies. This is requested by P and Z and a good idea. I think that you know Judy and Mike Anderson. She was a senior planner with Cochise County. Do I have permission to proceed? And um, Mr. Parkin did send me permission to um, to hire Ms. Anderson to um, compile this report. And she's a professional planner, which I don't mean anything against Luke. But um, that was recommended at the time.
I think that's a wonderful step forward, Joe.
Good idea.
We wanted to do it before, but then the, the whole COVID thing came down and um, it was pretty, you know, at that point, it was pretty scary for everybody and everything shut down.
Have you talked with Judy, whether she's still interested in doing this?
I have not. She was a year ago, that's all I know at this point. But there's others that we could hire also. But Judy was just really nice to work with and very pleasant person.
Well, if there's been, if, if there's been three studies, it'd be good to pull all that data together. And if we can get somebody that's a planner to do it, that's, sounds good to me.
That, that would also uh, eliminate any any friction that might develop due to the fact that I'm on the council, okay? And uh, I think an independent uh, set of eyes to look at that information and compile it into a, an action plan would be very effective.
And I'm curious if the plans that are being proposed for bike paths overlay parking issues? Should some of those be incorporated together to be sure there's no conflict?
I don't know that parking and, and bike paths would be, but that's something that we can, I can bring to whoever is hired to do the work. To verify that there, that there are no conflict.
Okay.
Um.
Go on.
You know, we've been, we've um, talked a little bit about this before and sent it back to the council for direction. And I'm looking at a whole bunch of information that's, that was done a few years ago. So, I mean, we've been talking, not we personally, but, but the town has been talking about what to do about parking for years. And we're, we're still talking about it. And I think hiring Judy is a really good idea. But I wonder at some point if it's not worth a work session once she gets her information together, something where we can sit, we can look at the drawings, look at the plans and spend more than ten or fifteen minutes talking about it, because it's a big deal.
Right, good suggestion.
And if we spend ten or fifteen minutes talking about it, you know, nothing may happen again because it's, it's just not there yet.
Good suggestion. I'm assuming that once something was developed, we would certainly discuss it, present it and discuss it uh, whether it's in a work session or a regular meeting, but a work session, I think, would certainly be merited.
Yeah.
Especially if it's a luncheon meeting.
Yeah, with beer at the American Legion.
Now you're talking.
Mayor and council not invited.
The beer might help.
Beer would definitely help.
I might also comment that Mr. Pollack is also, in addition to being the la, council liaison, the planning and zoning commission is also council liaison to the Streets and Infrastructure Committee. And that certainly is one of the sources of funding in terms of improving some, some properties for parking. And so I think that uh, Louis certainly uh, is in the right positions to, to assist us on this. And also happened to know that uh, before coming to Bisbee Louis was involved in similar projects at Pima air museum and at the airport in terms of maximizing parking uh, on, on a property. So uh, I certainly wanna acknowledge publicly that the experience that, that Councilman Pollack would, would bring to this. Consensus of the group then that we uh, go to Judy Anderson and, and ask her to kind of pull this together. And, and she would certainly meet with Mr. Pollack as well as us individually in terms of not only reviewing the literature but studies that have been done, but also receiving our input into her initial recommendations. Is that consensus of the, the commission?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Very good. Agenda item four, review discussion and update of the language for a mobile food vendor, food trucks with possible direction to staff. And we have an attachment in terms of uh, for us to react to. Staff, would you make your comments?
Sandy, Sandy's the one who did the work here. She did all the, all the footwork, my understanding. Is that right, Sandy?
Well, I, after our last discussion, um, I think we left it that we would just maybe send our ideas in to you. And I sat down one day and looked at the information that we had and the linwood seemed about the oh, I don't know, um, middle of the road, less restricted, uh, something that I thought would fit into Bisbee. But I was certainly surprised when I saw the document that I typed come along with the agenda, because I thought that somebody who knows more than I do would um, kind of review it, edit it, um, add city and zoning code references. So this was just meant to be some scratch that I put together.
Alright, thank you.
It was appreciated too, Sandy. But we're just, we're just so packed right now and things are just, just been so, been so crazy and we're so short of staff. It's really hard to, to work on and spend a lot of time on that. And I'm sorry that, that that's true. Like even Nina, she's been gone all week and she provides a lot of this, but um, it's just for me, for me to do it is really impossible right now.
Comments from commission on, on what's before us here for uh, as a starting point?
I'm a little confused as how garbage service fits under food trucks. Does it, the garbage service generated by the food vendor? Or is it city garbage service?
Right now, mobile food vendors don't have a garbage. They don't, they're not charged for garbage. Where's that garbage going? It's, it's going into the dumpsters. And there, there, um, people that they're, that are eating their food is putting their, their, their garbage in the dumpsters. And it's only fair that, that, that um, they, that they contribute to the city's garbage bill.
Other comments?
What about restrooms? Do, will restrooms fall under that same thing?
It did. We're gonna, we're gonna have restrooms is one of the things we, um, Nina and I had worked out, well, Nina worked up a list and I looked at it, I should say, for your fairness. But um, the restrooms are something that we're, that we're recommending that um, you guys require some kind of an arrangement on restrooms. If you, which currently with the code, the building code that we use, in the plumbing code, that if you've got, if you have tables, you gotta provide restrooms. If you've got pickup service, you don't. But I think it should specifically say that in the regulations.
Other comments, questions?
So where do we go from here? How do we go through this line by line and incorporate some of what we just discussed? And edit and such?
Why don't we, why don't we do it? We break it down into pieces and cover every, every meeting will cover part of it. And find it a little bit there. But thank you, Sandy, for the work that you did. It's very good. You, you blushed a little bit. It's nothing that you're not saying you did for it.
Well, I put a lot of little notes in there saying, you know, and this, yeah.
So you'll bring this to us at our next meeting, Joe?
Yep.
Okay. I also commented the, a food truck would also have to meet our international building code, right? Requirements.
No. Food trucks are under, under the Department of Transportation or, or, you know, whoever. With vehicles, I have no control over, over trucks and mobile.
So such things as electrical and so forth.
If they're plugging into somebody else's electrical, yep, I, I can look at those things. But as far as the vehicles, I have, I am neutered.
It wouldn't be treated like a mobile home structure that have, would have to meet building codes at some point?
Those that are on foundation.
If I remember correctly, when reading this, um, it also said that none of the mobile food vendors could provide alcohol. Is that correct? Yeah. Um, I don't, I don't know. I think there are events where people want to have beer or any things provided. I think that's kind of um, that that really restricts things.
Well, I think what Sandy provided us here makes a distinction between uh, special events, which might include liquor versus something that's uh, operated on a continuing basis.
There is something in here. I just can't find it right now, but we may need to be a little more specific on that.
Alcohol licensing has its own set of um, standards, too.
But it can be done from mobile units, right? Yeah, people and big events often have beer trucks and um,
That falls under a special use permit?
Correct.
To, to facilitate those types of things. And then, and then the trucks themselves have specific requirements that they have to, to maintain in order to facilitate the distribution of alcohol.
Well, at the farmer's market, water, I was providing bar drinks. And they were doing it from the big orange bus that's out there. And the health department shut that down, not because of alcohol. But as I understand it, because they didn't have a three compartment sink in the big box. So.
Yeah, uh, there, there's, there's also a crossover with the health department, with the Arizona liquor laws. There, there's several things that come to play when a vehicle wants to serve alcohol. Whether it's beer, mixed drinks. So it's not just, do they have this? That's just one component. So, you know, you can get a license, a temporary license to serve alcohol. Fine. And then there's certain underlying codes and things that you need to maintain to support that license that allows you to, to serve it. So one is a, one is permission to serve it. Another is how are you going to serve it? And that falls under also another set of codes and guidelines.
Yeah. You know, I can't think of a food truck, I can't think of any special events where alcohol's come out of a truck. It's usually under a tent.
Well, they have, they have beer trucks, Budweiser to big events. Will, will bring a truck and it's a refrigerated truck that also has beer taps attached to it on the outside. And they're served in, in cups, okay? There's also special events where they do serve mixed drinks and cocktails as one would do at a private party. And there's specific rules and regulations. One, you have to have a license to serve the alcohol. And then two, you need to have certain physical attributes to support the actual sale of that beverage. So you go to a big event and they have a party tent and there's a bar there, that bar needs to meet certain requirements above and beyond just the licensing.
I think the county fair had a beer truck at one point.
Probably.
Yeah.
Are there specific recommendations for consideration as we're reviewing this? We want, then Joe, you wanna bring this to us either in pieces or uh, some type of a draft at our next meeting? Okay. Move on to commissioner comments. Any comments from commissioners? Uh, any I uh, agenda items you'd like to see us address in the future? Other comments? If not, do I have a, a motion to adjourn?
Go moved.
Second.
We are adjourned. I thank you. My wife just brought a plate of food into me, so.
You have any extra?
Thank you all.
Guys, all have a nice week and hopefully see you around town. Thank you, guys.
Good night, everyone.
Bye.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Joe.
Bye bye, guys. Thanks, Joe. Thanks, Louis, John, everyone. Good night.